Beaming our number into the first large meeting for Thursday, April 3rd. Please stand for your pledge.
Let's begin to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please raise your hand for a prayer.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for these communities. I thank you for our entire Calico community. Thank you for all that are gathered here, those that couldn't make it, watch over them and keep them all healthy and safe. Give us the wisdom to continue to persevere. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
There's one executive session held at the end of our last meeting. It was personnel related in specific for the open position for the zoning department. This evening's meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast purposes on YouTube. At this time, we'd like to welcome anyone with a public comment on agenda items. So please come forward and state your name. So we have it for the meeting minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ah, Miller. In the packet, there's a bid results for the recommendation for the Metterburg development for curbing. Not sure if you guys know about it, but in 2023, Bunker Hill and Cardinal Drive had the same situation and those residents had to pay for their road curbing. In 24, it's been playing the same thing. So the township now, if they take all the cumulative of the bids, it's about $150,000 that township's going to pay to do all that curbing versus the past two years, everyone had to do their own. Because of my curb goes bad at my sidewalk, I need to replace mine.
It was just the way it got put out to bid.
Okay.
So that's why it shows there as part of our bid packet. We're going to be discussing how we're going to handle payment of that once we get to that agenda item.
Cap. Thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out. Anyone else? Okay. See, none. We'll start with our presentations with Pure Cycle.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bill Roundtree with White Barters. Here this evening, I have Carl Wright, the owner of our firm, Brian Atkins, our civil engineer. Also in the audience is Claudia Shankar, attorney. I'm pretty sure if we don't make direct eye contact or ask her any questions, I won't get a little tonight.
For some reason, she's sitting next to the chief.
So we've been asked to come here this evening to give a brief update. I think that's why we're here, on the project where we're at, the next steps and timing. So since the last time we met, a lot has been accomplished. We've had multiple submissions and reviews by PennDOT. I think we're on John's submission number six coming up.
Six or seven.
Which is, which is PennDOT. We should be at the end on that. We're also still working on the civil side of land development. We expect a re-submission of that soon. For the project, the critical path is still PennDOT due to the long lead time for equipment and mass harness. So as of right now, our anticipated schedule is start construction sometime this summer and then project finish in the fall. Hopefully end of September, beginning of October. Other things that have been accomplished since the last time we met, we've recently made our NPDs permanent application, follow the new SPGP rules that the state has. We were able to coordinate with Fish and Wildlife to get our bond trouble clearance, which was a bit of a headache. It wasn't the topic when I showed up here last. It popped up after that. But anyway, we were able to resolve that and we got our, we got our clearance. So, so that was good news. Other than that, I'm here for any questions you might have on, on any details, progress?
Yep. Just a, I keep seeing value engineering in your updates every week. I'm just curious what that is. I'm probably one of these guys thunder too, but what is value engineering?
Yeah, no problem. So we do it on every project we have. When we get the design from our civil engineer, we'll evaluate the project to make sure there's not too many elements proposed. It's not overdesigned. The section is the minimum exception, cross-section that the township would accept. We're not proposing a curb where a curb's not required. So to re-engineer the design to get as much value and make it as, you know, reduce costs as possible. In this case, we were asked by the previous township manager to see what we could do there in order to potentially offset some of the township's contribution toward the project.
Okay. So you're looking at, so basically you're just trying to figure out ways to save money and go right to where the ordinance is currently written.
Yes. And unfortunately, after looking at it a few different ways, having contractors evaluate it as well as our design team, it's pretty close to the new design. There's a few things here and there that we might be able to request from D-Port and save a little money, but there's not a lot of people on that. It was a pretty tight design.
Okay. You said September, October?
Completion.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. That would be most beneficial, I would say, this year. I, my concern, why I'm asking these questions, is just keep seeing almost the same update every week and nothing's really changing. And I'm just concerned that, I know obviously we're working through PennDOT issues and PennDOT permits and so on and so forth, but I haven't seen anything updated on your end except value engineering. That makes sense, but at the same time, I haven't seen any drawings or anything like that. But we can actually start working together on, to make sure it is value engineered so that the township and you, we work together. So I would suggest maybe we get a drawing a little bit sooner than later. You gotta have something. I would hope that way we can start having conversations with engineers and everything else that needs to happen and that ball roll a little bit quicker.
So we submitted a full, fully designed civil engineering.
Okay.
Package to the township and received a full review from the township consultants. It's that design coupled with review comments that we've been evaluating to see what we can piece together to make this as inexpensive as possible, depending on both of us.
I didn't know if there was enough to anyone. I saw the other one. I'm getting it through your value engineering, so.
There will be. So we anticipate submitting soon to go back through land development. And along with that submission will come waiver requests. We'll discuss those in detail. I did have a pretty short seating, but when we submit it, we'll discuss each waiver, why we're asking for it, how beneficial it was. And again, that's, that will still happen within the PennDOT process, which is still pretty bad.
Yeah, I guess we were seeing weekly updates for a long time, but was it been the last four or six weeks? I didn't see anything come through. Was that on our, our phone not getting them out or was there nothing sent or what?
Uh, it's kind of a shared, 50/50 on that. I did send an update two weeks ago to the new manager and assistant manager.
You got that?
Yep. Prior to that, sort of, I had given the previous manager his last update. He mentioned he wanted us to come to this meeting to give an overall project update. So I didn't update him those two weeks. Then that meeting got moved a month when he tendered his reservation. So that was the month you mentioned that. Otherwise, we'd be consistent every week.
You talked about six or seven submissions to the PennDOT, is that?
This will be submission number six.
Number six. You know, I understand there's back and forth, but you know, why so many? I guess. What's the holdup in your opinion there that you can't make one and then a second one is, is good to go?
So PennDOT, this is my opinion. So I'm on record and I'm a big, big, also. But my opinion is PennDOT has a very tight timeline window that they're required to review things in. And they do what review they can in that window and then give you a review letter. They may not have continued their review in those 30 days. So a lot of the comments we've received are not repeat comments, but new comments. The last letter, Donald Sigal's on it, there's anything in there that was sort of unaddressed the last time. Some new things kind of popped up on the signal plan and nothing major, but I don't think any of them were deficiencies in TPD's vision.
Yeah, I think the number of submissions was based on the project. The hill, the hill road closure, I believe, was only two or three submissions. So when we talk about all the submissions, that was everything from day one of the project coming up with the main HOP up front hill. We had basically two, two submissions for that application. And technically, right now, plans basically depend on several groups. So in order for them to issue the HOP, the traffic signal permit has to be. There was some very minor comments to be received, I believe, in February, beginning of March. Again, very minor comments that can be addressed. And once they're addressed, I don't know if I keep the, I said, seven miles, we gotta get the plan here so the township can sign. And that has to go back to PennDOT. Well, if PennDOT has a signed plan and they can issue the permit. The problem with that is, you know, by the time they get that in, we get these signs, it's not taken by PennDOT another 30 days. They allow, they usually do a review cycle every 28 days. It's usually about take 30, 30 days. So if you have that game, get the plan by the time you issue a permit, we're gonna be another month up against permit. Once the permit's in hand, then those guys can take that permit, give it to their contractor and supplier. He can go out to their suppliers and order the mast cars and the poles. Those manufacturers will not release, or suppliers will not release the poles until they have the signed permit in hand. And I'm seeing right now that some of these poles, anywhere from 18 to 22 weeks of lead time for mast cars. So I think to say that the, the project can be completed this summer, I mean, the signal will not be up. There's no way the signal will be up in that amount of time. So once we get the permit, here we are in April. We get the plans next week. We can assign it back in here, talk from right beginning of May is when the permit will be issued. That will go out to those guys. They give their supplier and they can send old shop drawings back to the township. We would review them, you know, these couple of days, review them, get back, fast track them, get back, they send them off. And then they send them off to the manufacturing poles group. So from that point on there, it could be 18 to 20 weeks until those poles are here. Again, the underground conduits are put in, the junction boxes are put in, make sure a lot of that work was done, the underground work was done, the original intersection was done. So we'll get that done again. But now it's a matter of, you know, they can put the foundations in, they're already ready to go. You gotta wait for the poles to come. So if you have 20 weeks, that's five months. So I'd see probably by the end of the year, probably when the poles are there, they'll be ready to move. That's why it was critical to get the signal permit moving quickly because the new amount of time, it used to be like 26 weeks. They're down to about 20, 22 weeks now. So again, it still takes time to get those poles in.
Now, part of that process, we have been successful getting shop drawings prepared, obviously at risk, but we do it once we got work from DOT that the mast cars at least were, were set. So we get a head start on that.
The manufacturer don't want to release them until they have the signed permit because if they release them, they're wrong size or something's not right and they're on the hook. So they always wait till they have the signed permit in. So that's the process with the signal. The HOP interview was pretty cut and dry, it was simple. It's just basically for road closure. We had some discussion, I think, on the treatment of how the road would be closed and turned around or anything like that. And I think that was, ends up rolling to the, to the, yeah, so top side street right away.
And that part's already started off on five years ago.
So there's no letter of credit. There's, again, because it's a municipal project, so it's not something we have to go through. They still have to record the permit, but there's no letter of credit. All the other stuff, it goes more for the private project. So at least you cut that out of the process.
Would, in the, in the progression, would the waiting on the traffic lanes stop the additional road construction from happening?
No. No, because right now, there's no signal there. It's just come out, you know, whenever you're gonna shut off hill or relocate it over, you want to make sure the signal's up. So you can build it, have everything off. And then once the signal goes up, the mast cars are up, the signals are together, then you can pull the, pull the barrels and pump it up. And as John alluded to, when we build our existing driveway, we built that entire intersection and that stretch of our driveway to the final whole road configuration. So most, if not all, the work that's not direct signal work is going to be from that existing point on.
Why would you anticipate TPD getting us the plan on this?
While you're on, we had a call yesterday with, with township consultants and they said they would let us on Monday for signals team.
So I guess, construction of, of the road or whatever could potentially start in the next, let's say, 60 to 90 days possibly, if everything, if everything is, lines up for you guys?
I don't know. I mean, we'll, we'll talk about that in greater detail if it's not for the season.
Yep, yep.
But I don't know how much we want to do without.
Understood.
Very confident.
Understood. Yeah, I, I think.
By the moment, we should know.
There, there could be discussions that could be had here and at another time. But you know, like I told you previously, communication's huge. And you know, I, I think on a township standpoint, we did a lot and went above and beyond to get you guys in so your tenant could come in and all that. And I think you'd agree to that, to that point, right? We, we went above and beyond for you guys to get goals, to get Pure Cycle in there.
Yeah, I think we've been working well together, so.
So my main concern is, and I'm not talking smack on a developer or any developers, but once, once you're already collecting rent, the rest of it, you know, you, you gotta move on to other projects. You have to. You can't just wait here until hill road gets rebuilt. So you have to start your next project while you're already finishing this one or even before you're halfway. I just want to make sure we don't forget about hill road because we expressed how important it was. And it, it's a constant liability for our school, school buses to pull out here, any resident in their car. I mean, we're, we're, I'm so happy to say that there's not that many accidents, but there's a lot of close calls, a ton. So this is a huge improvement for, for the township, for the community as a whole. And I just want to make sure we get it done sooner rather than later and keep pushing the cane down the road. And I apologize if there was any lack of communication maybe from, from previous, you know, with, with the manager between you guys and us, like if, if there was some, you know, drop conversations or whatnot, not everything was coming to you guys or us. But you know, we're an open book. So please, like, contact Rich, contact Melody, contact these guys. You know, anything that needs to happen, please come to us or we can sit down, have a conversation, Matt, Claudia, whatever. I said her name, so she should probably bill you. But.
It's not gonna be that.
But you know, whatever, whatever needs to happen, this road's gotta happen. One way she performs, so let's try to figure it out.
So I know we went through a couple of ups and downs and the last time I was here was not a pleasant meeting. But we, we haven't wavered on our resolve to get this done for you guys. And we continue to push and will continue to do so. And just on the communication front, we also invited Rich and he sat in on our meeting yesterday just to help get him up to speed.
Yep, yeah, he told me. Yep, I appreciate that. All right. Do you have any concerns for us while you're here?
The only thing that we need from the township at this point is we're, we're still waiting for a signature, I guess, a re-signing of, of a town letter, a sign on, on the grant. So I think it's in your hands.
Bill, just really quick, you mentioned about the timing of the project and so forth. When are you looking at some re-submission of that revised plan back to us for review by the end of the month? Or do you have a timetable for that?
I don't know about the end of the month. I don't, does he look nervous when you said that in front?
I'm just thinking because of the 60, 90 days of getting this started in that way.
A few weeks, a few weeks.
Yeah.
I mean, last time you turned the review around.
Yeah, the review comes.
It was magic.
Yeah. I, I usually, I'm trying to prioritize it. It's just not always possible given the timing here. So that's why I thought I'd ask. And the other, just generically, you mentioned about the waivers that you might be requesting. Is anything related to the waivers pertaining to the actual construction of the road? Now, it's more, this is more or less for the board to hear? Or are we talking items that may be improvements that are in the saldo specifically, but may not be related to the actual road cross-section, the, the curb, curb line of the road, the stormwater drainage, those types of things?
So two, I would say there's two categories of waivers that we're requesting from. One category, one, we'll call it, is waivers that we've known from the beginning that we would use as part of this application to build the road to the agreed upon cross-section and standards.
Okay.
From a year ago when we set that plan.
Right.
Second is, as a result of our value engineering, some other areas that we would have to request relief, more partial relief from some ideas on stormwater management, nothing significant, but minor enough to save a little money.
Okay.
Maybe deferment, which some townships treat as partial waiver on, on things like lighting, if we want to defer that.
Okay.
So things along that, that would be the setting category of, of, nothing significant.
That's, that's helpful, I think.
Nothing significant.
For the board to hear that it's not necessarily really the road itself, but there may be other components involved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you for showing us.
All right. Take care.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, moving on. Next up, we have Calico comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
See you, John.
Hi, Claudia.
Hi, John. You must say.
No.
All right, good evening. I'm Claudia Shank with McNeese Walson, Eric. I'm here this evening on behalf of Vendersen Development Company. Just to re-introduce Vendersen to the board a little better to any members of the public that may not have seen our prior presentations. Vendersen is one of the largest privately held real estate companies in the United States. They have over 800 properties, 40 states, more than 50 million square feet. Portfolio is diverse. It includes shopping centers, warehouse, industrial, office and hospitality. So property we're here to discuss tonight, which is on the exhibit that I handed out, we've talked about it many times before. It's about 57 acres that is bound by roadways on both sides. It's North Winstown Road, Cardinal Power, Spur Road and Loush Road. And it's currently zoned C2. I know the board is familiar with the history of this property. Vendersen has owned it since 2007. Originally, they received approvals in 2008 and constructed a commercial center on this tract. Unfortunately, that project was no longer viable following the economic downturn in 2009 and then ultimately COVID. We've had multiple conversations with staff about this project. We've talked to the board about it a number of times. In 2023, we did advance a text amendment to rezone the front portion of the property to C1 and the rear portion of the property to industrial. And that conversation was initiated because we had a prospective convenience store tenant that wanted to come to the site. So two years later, we have finally come to terms with our convenience store tenant. We can identify for you that it is going to be sheets and we're ready to move forward with land development for the proposed sheets. Before we did that, and we'll be coming before you in coming weeks and months with a text amendment and a map amendment to allow for the sheets, the sheets or a convenience store is not permitted in the C2 zoning district. It is permitted in the C1 zoning district. So we are going to still need that rezoning for the sheets. And our intent would still be to rezone the entire portion of the property to C1 as we had talked about in prior discussions with the hope of trying to get some community commercial uses, restaurants, things of that nature along the front of the property. We discussed it before, but two years later, we still think that the appropriate use and really only use that we had interest in for this property on the back side has been industrial warehousing. So this is a concept not dissimilar to the concept you would have seen in 2023, that shows a warehouse in the back portion of the property. We wanted to revisit it one more time before we come in and propose a map amendments to accommodate the sheets. And see if any of the board's thoughts or reactions to this plan or proposal have changed. If they have not, we'll go forward with the commercial just on the front portion of the property. But again, two years down the road, we still think this is the appropriate configuration. So we're here to, to answer any questions that you have. James Buglioli from Vendersen is also here. He can only find seats in the very back of the room, but we're happy to answer any questions you have.
I've just got four or five at the front.
So I'll start off, because I have my own East Calico supervisor Facebook page and I posted it two weeks ago about you guys coming in. And all the feedback I keep getting is save the farm lane and nowhere, those two things, no warehouses and save farm. This, this particular property obviously isn't preserved. It's not agriculture, as you said. It's commercial. The other, the other big things everyone's saying is give us another grocery store, restaurants, a coffee shop, which those two things are on there. Rexxer stores, and I'm gonna say what they say, right? Target, Lidl, Wegmans. I know a lot of those aren't, you know, possible probably, like Target or Wegmans or Home Depot slash Lowe's. But those are the comments that I got from residents. And being that obviously I see people every day with, with my job, everyone's always asking, what's going on? I'm like, hey, well, I, you know, these people are coming to the meeting. What would, what would you like to see on this property? And the first thing that comes out of their mouth, if, if I get shot every time they say no warehouses, I wouldn't be here. So that, that's, it's a sore topic for East Calico. And another thing that people keep saying, and they don't realize, zoning's a huge thing in this township. And they keep saying, no more houses. There's already too many houses. And, and, and as we know, there's a lot of properties zoned residential for housing. So we can't just go like that and change zoning for residential. So I always try to tell people, hey, look at our zoning. And you know, there, there's a lot of places that are zoned for residential or commercial and everything else. And we just can't just decide just like that. If someone puts in a plan that we're gonna say, you can't put houses there. Well, wait a minute, it's zoned residential. Well, you can't put houses there. We can't do that. So a lot of people are ignorant to that fact because they think that we can just do that because we're sitting up here. That's not the fact. We, we all know that. But in this case, obviously you guys will be coming in asking for rezoning in the back and you obviously need our support to make it happen. I'm a huge component of, I say how it is. I'm not a fan of having a warehouse on this property. And I've said that since day one. This is my fourth year. Whether or not I run again in two more years, I don't know. But maybe if someone else replaces me, they might be in favor of it. I don't know. But right now, I'm, I, it has not changed for me. I'm a huge supporter of everything on the front. I think that's way overdue. I just wish, you know, we could get more things for the community here other than another warehouse.
I understand that. The only thing I can say is it's been 18 years we're trying to get that kind of development here. And believe me, they work with a lot of national tenants, all the tenants that you're listing. And it's, it's not happening. So I understand the desire of the community, but there's, that has to be balanced with the economic reality of what tenants are willing to, to come to this site. But I appreciate your comments.
So are they, are they willing to move forward with, let's say, the front part of it, without the rezoning of the light industrial in the back to kind of get this property kickstarted and see what, you know, they say build it, the rest will come. And I'm a true believer of that. I think three years ago, when they came in the first time, I had proposed a mini Belmont, like in Lancashire, with residential and commercial underneath. Seeing, being that we're right close to the, the turnpike, you know, and 222. But they, back then, I think they shut that down too. The, the last person that represented that was here, he wasn't having that for me and he stormed out of here that meeting. But would, would they be willing to move forward with the front part and, and see what, what other interests they get, being that they work with so many national tenants and say, hey, you know, they're, you know, we have over another, I think, what, it's like 500 more houses that are, are on dock right now for East Calico Township. And West, West Calico is, is gonna probably be building too now that they have their own sewer plant. There, there's gonna be a lot, whether we want it or not, there's gonna be a lot more people here. So.
This is not intended to be either we do the industrial and the commercial or we don't do anything at all. I mean, Vendersen has owned this property, again, for 18 years. They're not going away. We're leaving the community. So if the board is not supportive of the industrial at this time, we're still gonna move forward with the front portion for commercial, move forward with the sheets, do what we can. I think there'll be challenges even filling out the other commercial part of the site besides the sheets, but we're still gonna move forward with that regardless of what you decide tonight. We're just asking for consideration, given that we're gonna have to go through the effort of rezoning regardless.
We're just asking for consideration given that we're gonna have to go through the effort of a rezoning regardless.
Yeah. Well, you, so Claudia, in the five, six years since COVID and disclosed the lack of warehouse space, there has been a effort everywhere to develop warehouses. But also in that five years, the uses that go into warehouses has been more. And I think Pure Cycle is, is a good example. That was proposed as warehouse. And then Pure Cycle came along, and that got categorized by us and PennDOT as a manufacturing use. And then they did, first they were only gonna take half the building, and then they took all of it. So is this a warehouse as a structure or a warehouse where Benderson is already pretty sure the type of occupant might move in?
James, I'll let you address that. James, I do want to say.
As, as he's coming forward, I'll, I'll just finish that thought. A lot of buildings are being built to a style because they're adaptable to a lot of uses and we're calling them warehouses, but they're really industrial buildings.
At this point, we don't have a tenant, but we're building around a flex space, and then it gets a mix of tenants. We had, I'll give you an example. It was about fall, we built one, and we had a company that did cable for companies, so there's, there's own services inside. They took 100,000 square feet of warehouse. They took 60,000 square feet of office. They have all their employees there. They have you come in, they go through the services, then they ship the stuff out, they come to your business, they install the cables. So warehouses is not typical like what you see, what you usually see years ago.
It's not logistics.
No, it's, it's, it's a mix of, of different types of we use. At least I tend to see, I always say 20, 30% of buildings tend to be insulated office spaces. So instead of having a standalone office, they've accumulated their office, their storage, their shipment out altogether. So that's what we're seeing. We tend to do really well with that.
And again, the rectangular, cubical shaped buildings that we call warehouses are, are the most flexible space.
They are, they're all using them more, but, you know.
I guess last time you were here, we might as well bring it up again, we talked about the additional residential units that are coming in the township. Lorenzo touched on it a little bit. We have a gentleman in the front row talking about bringing in 183 units in the township, possibly starting this year, probably starting this year. And, you know, we've got so many other properties there that are lined up that way, and the talks are happening. You know, why is it you think that there's not enough demand here in this, in this area for, for that kind of commercial development?
And I, I was, we've seen a lot recently that retail tenants wanna go where the retail already exists. And what I'm, what I'm doing a lot, you know, with retail, is increasing density on asphalt we have. So what you'll see is, well, only shopping center, because I have a grocery store, there'll be parking up front. Parking lots, you see the road a bit, you see Home Depot, they, they used to use 400 parking stalls. They don't need 400 parking stalls anymore. So they're willing, if you have some of those stalls, they can build a restaurant up front, right? The restaurant doesn't go somewhere where the traffic is already there. And that has been, before COVID, when we had this project, you know, retail center, we were doing a lot of those big centers. I mean, I could buy big tenants, grocery stores, and all those, Home Depot. We're not seeing that anymore. I haven't done a big shopping center like that since 2009. I don't know how many, Cody has done. But what I'm, what I'm really struggling out by time doing is adding density to the places we have, because that's where the retailers wanna be. They wanna be where the people already going. We're having a hard time enticing them to go other places. And that's in all over the country. I mean, it's not just here. It's, I do a lot of it in New York. That's what we're seeing. So building the big, I haven't done a Lowe's or a Home Depot in a long time. Target, Kohl's, we, I don't, we're the largest part that we've done above in the country. So it's not, it's not the lack of, we market this site all, all across the country. We can bring users here. If you have coffee shops here, and we have, we bring them here. They're coming to the site. They've heard of them. We've had discussions with them. It's not for lack of pride. So it's just, that's what I'm seeing in the market. It's, they're just not willing to go there. They're only people with traffic already hits. So it's not so much a household, right? Because we're, we're households, and they even go to the closer shopping centers. You know, where they're driving, which they probably are going to now. And then what happens is those tenants wanna go, the old traffic's already done, and they don't see us. It's interesting, we used to be building at Com, we used to build up there. And for a number of years, we were staying on tickets because we built it, and no one was coming. So we, we tend, we don't build things at retail unless we have a 50% lease rate at this point. We wouldn't put a little capability on that because it's not worth us building it and having it sit there yet.
At a 450,000 square feet of warehouse, what is your, what, do you have a minimum that you would break out of this as a single space, a minimum square footage? Let me tell you what I'm getting at. Again, on a smaller scale, I completed a project in Slampie Township where it was intentionally built for small manufacturers. And, you know, 100,000 square feet could be split up into two, four spaces. At 450, I mean, do you have a comparable indicator?
In, in about 100 or even, there's a little tendency to break those sites up.
So, so potentially four or five separate users in that, and that could include manufacturers.
That's very important, manufacturer. And we're not, we're clearly intend to go forward with trying to start regardless of the discussion tonight. We have a signed tenant with the convenience store and the gas station. We're working on putting that application together on both to find that other people.
Is there interest in the other pad sites as well?
Today, there is not much interest. We, we have brought a, a coffee shop here repeatedly, but at least one of those. We would have nothing to learn. Our, our bread and butter is we're part of them. And I would rather come here and tell you about how to break these all the projects. That's what this town wants. But I don't, unfortunately, I don't, or the tenants wanna go. And that, that's gonna be the guiding factor here. And I feel we don't market it, and I feel we don't bring them to the end of it. But obviously, we're just, we're living on here, walking on the side, driven around town, driven around the housing. I mean, there's a lot of work going on, but we're just testing by hand. You know, so that's what we are. And we started in the neighborhood of, of the convenience store. And, and, and I agree, that is a good start for the site. You know, they got something here.
And do you buy into the, Lorenzo's comment that once you start something, build it, and they will come as a starting base?
I think, I think this user is a, is a good user for the product. They may attract, they tend to go for this user. There's some other businesses that locate around them. I think we may see that. We may see that. We haven't had as much of a building in the come as I have in the past, if you want to know. It's been, it's been a tough market, and I think, you know, it's not gonna get any easier in the near future. And we have, they have this site. I wish we could build the other side. I wish there was actually a, a really heavy, a, a shopping center. Yeah, around a grocery store. It was great in the site.
Okay, just one, one specific on the, on the Sheet site there. You have a sketch plan there. I guess, would that be for truck parking?
Maybe that, yes.
How, how many trucks would wind up being parked there? Can anyone tell us?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I, I didn't come here to talk about that, so I don't have that in front of me. I'd like to count the spots on this, and I'm private.
Does that make it more of a truck stop than a fuel station having all the spots there or?
I don't believe so. Sheets are a different type of usage than truck stops. They don't have showers. They don't have.
They're not a road.
They're not, they're not resting enough stock. So, and I, you see, some of those other ones, they have showers, but this is a, that's not. This is literally, I think, just a lot of popular, going inside, the fat trucks in the.
You have, you were talking about bringing a lot of retail folks out to look at the site. Have you brought warehouse folks out to look at the site? Do you have any interest there?
They're really interested in warehouses.
What kind of use? Just warehouse use or was it mixed use type?
We're seeing, we're seeing, we're seeing an interest in a mixed uses.
I have talked to developers outside of this room, just to get their feel of where their economy, where they're looking to build, whether or not. Warehouses are seemingly, from what I've heard, seemingly falling off from their popularity. We have so many of them. Now they're having a tough time filling them. So, you know, everything goes in cycles, you know. I don't need to go to the store to buy a pair of socks, which everybody talks about they wanted to do here in the township. I can order and have it delivered to my house the next day. So you obviously get warehouses for that, but everything goes cyclical. And I think someday, hopefully, we'll get back to going to the store and getting stuff. I hope. Are you seeing that same cyclical decline in warehouse?
We have not yet, but we still have a number of warehouse projects. We do have tenants for them. We are seeing. I mean, we also, we look out for future, so we've got this project of Benderson, 16 years, 18 years. I think it was just approved when I got here, the Benderson warehouse project. And if you look at this project, there's, there's a follow-up. We have not seen it yet, but by the time this project gets approved and we go to build it, and we wouldn't build it until we had tenants in it. So it'll be five years out. So this is, this is a three, you know, three years of approvals, which we've got, and that, I was just saying about, and that presentation. So we may have a plan way ahead, right, for that. So what makes you drop it off now, three to five years from now for us, when you think about tenement in this building? So, and we are looking, we look ahead for that. So that, that's why we're here now.
And just looking at this, where would your retention go? Is that the green space along Canal Boulevard there? Or I would assume so, because that's where the.
That's downhill.
Right.
That, there is, I mean, this is just probably there right now.
Obviously.
The tension is, is out in front.
Oh, well, my question is, the reason for that would be, you know, could you put more commercial space across that front edge? Or is it pretty much landlocked to that?
We certainly, if we could get more commercial, we, we look commercial across the front. So the, the stormwater could, as an engineer, as an engineer, we genuinely can work around that.
Oh, just so everybody knows, I'm just looking at commercial here and a lot of green space here that could also be commercial if it doesn't become something that doesn't allow commercial.
If we had more of an interest in commercial, we'd start with standard commercial. I don't wanna show so much and say, we got all this commercial.
Understood.
I'd like to show, honestly, what I'm showing is a reasonable development of, if we could get the tenants, what you probably see in the beginning. So if we could, we could get those kind of, we'd see a small mixed use building in the back, hopefully a couple of restaurants on the side. You know, maybe a coffee shop up front. That's, that's what we hope to see here. And if that got bigger, we could expand across the park. I'd like nothing more than extend across the park with commercial development. It's more than we can work out.
Thank you.
I know there was interest of a McDonald's. This was years ago, prior to the Ace Bank in the township showing up, or Members First is right now. But there was issues there with the driveway with Turkey Hill apparently, and it never went in. So that was years ago. Members First had been there multiple years. So that could be good for you guys there too.
They actually looked into the site.
They did?
They did look at the site.
Okay.
Yeah. So they did go with us, but they did walk. So they were, they were there.
Are we talking, are we talking, did I talk? Are we talking about Sheets on the north side of Colonel Howard? I had heard, and I don't know if this is true, that Sheets was also leasing part of the land, I'm sorry, on the north side. And are we talking about Sheets on the south side toward Freemstown, along Colonel Howard Boulevard?
So the, the current plan we have would be on, it would be on the corner of North Freemstown Road and the Boulevard. So it would be across, across the street from True Hotel.
Oh, okay.
So it would be right on that corner.
Right. And, and when we're talking about small businesses in the front, what does that mean for the rest? I know that 50, I don't know, to you guys, probably 53 acres doesn't seem like a lot. How, how much of the field, and you, you keep talking about the front and the back. I'm assuming that the back, when we're talking about storage and whatever, was the place that meets Loush Town Road?
Loush.
Or Loush, Loush Road, sorry.
Warehouse.
Yeah, the warehouse. Also, trucks aren't allowed to go back that road. How's that going to interfere with all the traffic that's coming out? The other question is, the, the small businesses, will that be along Colonel Howard Boulevard? And then part of this question is, how much of the rest of the field? We have, we're, we're neighbors that are right. I'm 257, Zach is 259. So of course, we're concerned, if there's a parking place, is it going to meet on our properties? Will it be macadamned all the way up to the, the corner lot, which I believe belongs to the person who owns the house in back of us?
We could certainly show you this drawing after, if you wanna grab this.
Well, I mean, just, just off the cuff, how, how much of that field will be developed even if you put in small, small shops or, you know, the coffee shop or whatever? Will that all be macadamned? Will that come up to the neighbor's housing?
It's not gonna come up to the neighbor's house, because there's some scheduled green space in Bubber area.
There will be green space.
Yes, yes.
You're gonna have a lot of, there. Like the, the original plan, back in 2008, you had a buffer between the houses along Freemstown Road and, you know, and you were gonna keep back all that buffer like you did before.
Well, I keep all that buffer space. We've not expanded, we've not expanded it out to any course.
Yeah. Are you still planning to put the mountain, the mountain up?
We're not, we're not that far yet. Right now, we're just.
Yeah. Well, that's, I was back, I live at 369, and that's how it was when they were talking about the shopping center. They were gonna keep that green there.
We are, we are. I would leave, I would do a regular system of that.
Because the only thing scared me about, and we talked about it before back in the day, was if you put a warehouse, all the trucks sitting there running. And, and having the reefer trucks and stuff sitting there becomes refrigerating or something.
And we put the trucks, I live in this man, far away from the residences, on the opposite side.
Isn't it solid there is a buffer requirement as well?
Yeah.
But where all the trucks go in and out if there's a warehouse in the back, in the back?
All traffic, all traffic right now is being directed at the, there's gonna be the traffic like their UGI and the Boulevard.
Oh, so they go.
That's the only in and out, the, the main in and out for all the truck traffic right there.
Which did not exist.
Which, which doesn't exist right now.
But, but also did not exist, those improvements were not planned when the truck, the shopping center was originally.
If we did plan a signal, at that point, we did get it approved. We got it signaled before UGI. Then UGI came in with their signal, and they worked with us on the driveway. So the driveway needs to accommodate development on the site. So whatever went here, that driveway is now built to accommodate, that signal's built to accommodate this.
Can I get your name for the meeting minutes?
Sure, Barry Steely. Steely S. T. E. D. E. L. Y.
And you, sir?
Jason Schlot, S. C. H. L. O. T.
Yeah. Yeah, again, we're, you guys came in to just talk about the sketch plan. I could get hashed out prior to all that, so.
We're just talking, we're just here to talk about the rain at this point.
Understood.
But Sheets is Tino.
They're some, so it will be similar to the NA park.
So you didn't wanna talk about parking stalls, you told us. Is there anything else you came here to talk about while you're here?
The parking stalls.
All of the Sheets.
Yeah. You, you told Jeff you didn't come here to talk about parking stalls.
I didn't count them, you know.
I didn't know if there's anything else you wanna talk to us about.
Well, that's one of the concerns. I mean, how much space is going to. Well, that's one of the concerns. I mean, how much space is going to be counted over for parking? And, and as a neighbor, will it affect us? But I know we're talking about green space there, but...
Again, whether it's a shopping center or a mixed use property, there is a limit on the amount of paved area. There is a minimum of amount of green space. They've got to balance all of that and manage their stormwater. And then their plan has to show how they're going to plant trees, bushes, et cetera, on the site to provide buffers with the neighboring properties. So nothing about that is changing. All of those requirements are the requirements that exist today. And existed when the shopping center was put in. With more stringent stormwater management.
Now.
Now, right. So encouraging less paved area.
And that, the green space, whoever takes care of it, I know this seems minor compared to everything we're talking about, but who takes care of that?
Benderson owns their properties. So this gentleman right here is not going to be riding the mower, but his management is going to handle it.
I think we're good for, for calling. You got anything else for us, Claudia?
No, I don't think so, because we will be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you be back second meeting, planning to be here, second meeting in April?
No, we're planning to submit our petition in April, so we, and earliest we will be into it after you're accepted or heard out.
Jeff, can I ask you a question? When you asked about the truck parking, was that in interest of or in disinterest of?
Well, there's a lot here, and you can take a look at this.
So it's, it's not your typical sheets, it's, it's a sheets with a diesel.
Well, the reason I ask is, can it, because I mean, I think there's a desperate need for truck parking. And if that could be a request too, I don't know if Sheets even does that kind of thing. If they have buildings with, like truck stop type buildings with showers and whatnot in it, but like, from what I see back in Acme, all the trucks that are on there, there's always trash laying out there. The trucks are there throwing their piss bottles out, throwing their trash out of the trucks.
They're overnighting there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, okay, I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand, because there's a required parking for them to operate, but then there's the place where people need to park overnight, and that's what you're talking about.
Well, they park all along the street there.
Exactly, so, so a communal lot for that purpose could be helpful.
Right.
Which is what UGI eventually did with commuter traffic.
And it might help them get them off of coming up Lauch Road too, and running over the stop sign at Reemstown and Lauch all the time, and destroying the corner property. They've already backed the road up, taking up more of aged property than what it was originally when we, when we all lived in there thirteen years ago.
Well, those are conversations that we can have to encourage community amenities.
And I have to say, it's just for that simple fact, like, are we pushing against this or are we reforing this? So that, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I think we ought to do what we can to get some truck parking with the sheets and whatnot. And if they have that, then that's great, but he's saying, like, they're planning on just stopping in and going again.
Well, if that's the case, they don't need all of those parking spaces.
Right.
So that's a question to ask.
We're just getting, we're just getting...
Yeah.
Right. That's what I'm saying, I'm just, I'm just saying the same thing, like, I'm just wanting to know.
And that could be...
But I think that'd be a good thing.
That could be what is in their mind, because of course, you know, Walmart encourages RVs to park overnight because then they shop in the Walmart. That could be what Sheets is proposing here and willing to ask.
Your name again for the...
David Sawyer.
I'm going to move old business ahead, that way you guys don't have to sit through this, the rest of the meeting. Because I know it's going to be breached, so the Calico crossings.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, March twenty, I believe it was, we had presented the sidewalk issue for Cross and Second Calico. Our understanding from the board is the desire to try to encourage the sidewalk on the Weaver side of the property versus the sidewalk on our side, since there's connection of sidewalk blocking that Old Homestead lane, I believe it is, and then there's a portion of sidewalk on Weaver Market property. Based on the conversation that we had last month, we revised our plans, our proposal, and I think that's part of the package tonight, to express our intent to try to extend the sidewalk on the Weaver Market side. So we'll approach the owners to see if they will grant the necessary right of way to construct the sidewalk. We would have to do that, you know, if we still let the plan move forward, we would put the cost of the sidewalk on the Weaver side on the Modern Crab River financials theory that we had to submit with the phase one plan, and try to resolve the construction issues prior to phase two. If the owners of the properties across the street don't agree to the easements, then we would contribute the cost of the sidewalk to the township, so that way, you know, the township can approach other means to get the right money for that sidewalk.
We appreciate the letter. We just got it today. Rich forwarded it to us. So we'll wind up talking with our consultants, and we'll be in touch regarding that, staying there.
Going now? I guess just, for clarification purposes, that letter talked about two property owners that were reluctant to move ahead with the sidewalk there. Was it last meeting we said all three of them, or what's the...
You know, I just, what I remember last time is when we went down to be there for some grants and corrective law, because you were more involved with it, with getting some pendant requirements, that we couldn't get some right of way, which wasn't even any, any changing of property. The pendant just wanted to say, hey, if, if in the future we need to encroach a property, we could. And they were reluctant to visit, and so they wouldn't, I think they, whether it was one or all four or three, I don't, I can't tell you that.
Right. So there's a gentleman on the corner, he has been responsive to conversations for easements. So we haven't talked to the sidewalk issue yet, but he's at least been receptive to conversation, so we're used to it. The Weavers have been receptive to conversation and have, so we expect that they will at least just talk. And hopefully favorably for the benefit that they receive for the sidewalk extension. There's two residential properties, I forget the names, like the, and there's another residential property that, I believe there are some two landlords. They expressed verbally that they were not interested in these easements and then had no response to us when we tried to reach out.
The one, the one guy that does respond favorably, if I remember right, he, I think he went to the media bureau and us bringing, so it makes a very workable situation, so, if that's what I remember. Well, let's see if we can pin down some of those details and then we'll help us decide how we might help you. But the, the big thing that we're looking for is like, yeah, we're all, it feels like we're all wanting to get there, and this is the phase two thing, because this will take a little time and not what we know. And so how do we get through, you know, how do we get started? And that's what we're asking for. What's pending is a preliminary plan?
Or preliminary plan for now.
And what's standing in the way of approving preliminary plan?
Well, just action on, obviously, the modifications, the waiver requests. There's a conditional letter out there that could be considered for a conditional approval. This is obviously one of those.
Right, how much of this has to be...
How much of that has to be...
It was all down.
A preliminary...
Let us figure it out.
Yeah.
And how much we think that's a good finding. And just so that we remember, we had this, we were going to put this on the pocket, we were working with downtown managers, and we were told that you, not possible, redraw it, re-put it back in, put concrete back on the other side. And so we're back here again, so this is just like, they're saying, please, you got to get off, we need to...
I think we said last meeting, we're very conducive to listening and working together. And this is the second meeting we've had in three weeks. So I think that's, that should be a sign of what we want to move forward with this. Because to your point, I think it's been too long as well, I understand. So I think we're certainly willing to have conversations again, as Goreza said earlier, about communication. More communication we have and more communication we can have, the better it's going to go. If we find out about the houses, we can have conversations there too. So I think we're all capable to have more conversations than less. We, we only received that letter yesterday, I only saw it today with the proposal on it, so we're committed to keep, we're trying to keep it moving. Absolutely. And you, one other detail, I guess you alluded to the fact that the Weavers are ready to work with you on sidewalks over there.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, they, they expressed positivity, it's been a while since we've... It's been a while since we've reached out to them because we were trying to resolve, you know, what the sidewalk...
Is your thought that that goes the whole length of the front of showing the former Weaver property?
If, if this proposal holds true, then all of the sidewalk would be on the Weaver side. It would eliminate the sidewalk on the crossing side, so that way you don't have a sidewalk on either. And then we would make a crossing at these entry to crossings development across the street to the Weaver, so that way there's just pedestrian safety from our community connecting to a side of the street where partial sidewalk exists.
But that does not go to full length of the Weaver property then, is that what you're saying? I saw the cost estimate proposal, it didn't really identify, or the total footage, I guess, and whether, with the complete...
Yeah, and it would complete the sidewalk connection, there's partial sidewalk on the Weaver side. So it goes from the corner of the Weavers to their access drive that they have on Squares Corner. It goes a portion across the access drive and then terminates. We would connect at that terminus point on Weaver track all the way to the corner of the Homestead. So it would complete the sidewalk connection feasibly along that side of the street.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You'll hear it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, action on March twentieth meeting minutes, I didn't have any changes, what about you guys? Make a motion to approve the March twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes, as presented.
So.
Motion of second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we got the sale of the loader and the vehicle.
And this is permission or authorization to advertise for sale.
Please, please.
I live next door to my...
Please use it now.
All right, so we're authorizing the sale of a ten-year-old John Deere loader, we have a new replacement that we just took delivery on, so put on our new sedate, and also a tenant lease vehicle.
I'd say just list it, we always got a accepted value at the, at the meeting when it's over, so if we don't like the bid, just say no. We got...
Service your...
I agree. And just so the board, the public knows, like Rich said, we did get the, the new loader with the grant money, two hundred thousand dollars for the grant money for our new John Deere loader, so we were able to get a brand new piece of equipment. I will make a motion to advertise for sale the John Deere front end loader with the attachments and a two thousand seven Ford SUV.
So.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We have the twenty twenty-five road program.
We opened bids on the road program last week. We received a good amount of bids, we had nine separate bidders, a good, pretty tight range of costs, so it looks like it was well received and understood, competitive. The price range is between seven hundred and, oh no, please, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, two forty-six is the lowest bid, and...
Four point one?
Yep.
One zero five eight.
One zero five eight six nine was the highest bid. So the bid's been reviewed by R2, and they recommended that we go with the low bidder, but we also have the option, we have a base bid, and then we have four options to consider. Additional roads, a little bit of paving is put in here, that's going to recycle, building is one alternative open and considered. And those are all in your package.
So like the one resident had mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, the way this was put out to bid, there's a lot of roll curbing that needs replaced through Meadow Brook. This, the road program this year, I don't know if there's anyone in here that lives in Meadow Brook, but Water Authority did a lot of pipe replacement, the laterals and all that in there, and it's, it's pretty rough. So we're taking all of our budgeted money, liquid fuels, and putting it towards the road program in Meadow Brook to do that. The curbing alone estimate came back at roughly one fifty-three, one hundred and fifty-three thousand. Per the near foot, that's ninety-nine dollars and two cents. Like the resident had said, when we did curbing, you probably weren't aware of it, you weren't here. When we did the curbing a couple of years ago at Cardinal and Oak, the residents were sent letters previously and said, hey, we're going to be doing your road. You have X amount of time to, to get your curb done before we come through. This time, they added it to the bid. So we are, we are going, well, Rich is going to go out there with, with Mike and our roadmaster and mark it out. That way they can send a letter to the residents and let them know how much curbing will be replaced on the property. And then I'm assuming the board is going to stay consistent and send a letter to the residents, letting them know that, hey, you have this much curb that's going to get replaced, we're going to replace it, and we're going to send you the bill for that. It was, it was how the bid package was put together. They're not going to have an option of who they want to use this time around. I hate to say it, but if you guys don't like that option, the only other option is you got to go repay and re, rebid the whole entire road program again without curbing, and you let the residents do it. But I don't know how else you guys want to put it.
Well, there was considerable talk about this at budgeted time last fall. And it was, it was talked about, I guess the board, this, this curbing was a major topic at that point. And it was discussed about how if residents are allowed to do it, if a contractor comes in and it's not done in a quality way, resident would have to have it redone so that it met the specs that are necessarily required. We don't want to go to all this trouble and have something put in that's not, not done in a good manner. So, you know, we, we made a decision, I think at that point, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be part of the bid project to be, for continuity purposes and quality purposes. That way the resident doesn't have to worry about getting a contractor in that would do efficient work. So, you know, I, I think that's why it was, was put in the big package. You know, and I'm, I'm still in favor of that. You know, I'm, I'm a little confused at this point, what is actually to be done or not to be done. There was a resident there that had a preliminary evaluation of eighty-four feet needing to be replaced, which, you know, that, that is a huge number for that. which, you know, that, that is a huge number for that resident. I don't know that it'll have to be done. That, that is to be determined yet. So, um, you know, I, I think we're working with some unknowns at this point. Just about how many feet. You know, I think there's multiple, many residents that just have a ten foot section where the curbing dropped and the water will not flow. It just falls into an abyss. So, um, you know, I, I, you know, I'm hopeful that the numbers remain reasonable for most, most old owners there. You know, it's, I don't think it's going to go well with, with people needing twenty or thirty feet replaced, getting thousands of dollars of bills. But, uh, you know, I guess continuity from the past is important.
Yeah, you know, has anybody found out what the actual cost per square foot would be if a resident did it themselves as opposed to us paying for it?
So I actually, um, Rich, you got something?
No.
So I, I actually called around. There's a local contractor that actually did that on Oak and Blue Jay a couple of years ago. And back then, two, three years ago, he charged seventy nine dollars linear foot removal and new. This bid is ninety nine oh three or ninety nine oh two. Removal installation if they, and they're going to re-march or seed or whatever they're disturbing. They're going to put that back into play as well. The contractor I spoke to did not, to a strictly concrete period.
And that was three years ago.
That was three years ago. So I assume with how everything's inflated, the price is where it's at. He asked me where we were at and he said, that's actually a good deal.
Well, and you, if you look across the bids, the, the curbing is rather consistent probably in that neighborhood. You know, with all these different contractors. So, well, I, I think that's pretty much market price. It's just what needs to be done versus what doesn't.
The reason I was asking is if I went and hired somebody myself, it's a price. If I go hire somebody, I got to pay prevailing wage. As a township, I should, not me, but us. Okay? So passing prevailing wage onto the homeowner is a tough spot for me. But if we're already pretty tight according to what the other ones are and then we're, and then it's guaranteed, we're probably getting like the, the bundle deal through that instead of, so it actually makes sense. I'd like to just see.
The lowest bidder is the, is also for the asphalt, for the roads, is the same person that's doing the.
Right.
The curbing. So it was in their best interest that, you know, maybe they marked up their asphalt a little bit, but came better with curbing. So it kind of worked.
Makes sense. I'm just looking out for the homeowners.
Yep.
And obviously when we get out there and we actually look at, do we need eighty four feet? I, I drove through there. I don't see that kind of need. I've seen, I see the burb baths Jeff's talking about where it settles. You know, and I'm learning as we're going here too, but where the water settles and will seep through the ground, freeze and pop and do, so your, your pavement doesn't last very long. So we want to make sure that the curbing is good so that the pavement lasts twenty five years instead of just fifteen. So, yeah, I. I went through there. I don't see a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of curb that needs to be done. But again, I'm just looking at with common sense, my own personal common sense. I don't know if we need to replace that much, but, but I, you know, again, I'd rather let the professionals tell me than I'll go back and, yeah. It's not marked out yet, so I didn't know exactly what I was looking at for.
Agreed.
So as, as Rich said, there, there's the base bid with four alternates. I'll make a motion to award. You guys want to add anything before a motion or?
Well, I, I just have one, one question here, maybe for Matt or Mike here. When, when bids like this are put out and this is concrete work that's being included in the bid, is there a chance that this, these contractors or some contractor now that concrete work to someone else or?
I'm sure. Yeah, it's possible. I'd have that.
Yeah, it, yeah, it could be or it could be.
They do it all.
Right.
So we, we don't really know that.
Right, they've, they've compiled all of that.
Right, so they put it into.
You know, just like they compiled whoever's providing materials.
Sure. Matt, and if we make this motion, uh, subject to, uh, the amount of footage of curbing, if we approve a dollar amount and the, that, that's including all the curbing that's on the bid. If it's less, does that?
And the, the terms of the bid reflect that the quantities will be established.
Right.
That it's set in the bid.
Yes, as we mark out.
So the bid is, as Mike, the, the phrase was escaping.
I'm doing it.
It is unit cost.
Unit cost, unit cost. I just want to make sure we don't hold it to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That we don't mark out if it becomes stacked and we're only doing, you know, twenty instead of forty feet.
It's quantity to be determined. You just go off the unit cost with whatever.
Very good. Perfect.
Yep.
And, you know, obviously it reflects either way. But as I was, we might have underestimated the amount of your feet, uh, curbing and, but you're approving the unit cost.
Right, okay.
I will make a motion to award the base and alternate bids minus alternate three, which is the township building road here for the compo site, for the twenty twenty five road program to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, Inc., Ephraida P.A., the lowest responsive and responsible builder bidder in the amount of nine hundred, three thousand, one hundred and sixty seven dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Official appointments. We have a couple of official appointments we have to change as kind of housekeeping since, uh, our last manager left. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rich Sickler as the East Cook County Township zoning officer effective April third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, another housekeeping item, the motion will point Rich Sickler as East Cook County Township break to no officer effective April third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And another one is a motion will point Rich Sickler as a delegate to the Langish County Tax Collection Bureau effective April third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a motion will point a fire marshal. I don't know if you guys are aware of it, um, but East Cook County Township does have an ordinance for no burning in East Cook County Township. We don't have a fire marshal to go out there really to enforce it. Uh, I know that a couple of fire chiefs have done that. They see fires burning, uh, in the backyard. Last weekend I got a call from one of them and said, hey, just to let you know, I stopped at this house. There was nine foot flames in the backyard. Everything was really dry. I'm sure everyone saw or maybe heard of the big fire that happened at Middle Creek. I, I didn't see how that started, but, uh, that got pretty out of hand out there. So I think it's, I think we need to designate someone to this, being that Harvey officially retired from doing that. And a couple of weeks ago, there, last Tuesday, I think, there was a house fire on Scenic. And the chief in charge there, only a fire marshal will temporarily condemn a residence. Correct, Rich?
Yes.
When needed. And again, that chief made the call and then contacted, um, our staff in the morning to let them know what, what, what's going on. But I feel we should designate this so that way that person already knows, um, whether he's able to do it with, with our approval or am I doing it and I'm going to get yelled at later? But I, I feel like we should put somebody's name there.
Tony, help me out in the past. Did we have, uh, two designees for deputy fire marshal or some?
It's always just been one fire marshal.
Yeah.
That's what it's been. But then I thought after Harvey retired, it was, because people have been calling me about burning and stuff. Because, oh, they call the township, oh, I was supposed to call one of the fire chiefs. So that's how we took it. I know years ago, and I'm not sure Jeff, if you were on the board, but the supervisors came to the three fire chiefs to write what we wanted to see in the fire marshal as the township was, you know, thinking of replacing, getting Harvey back up in place so when he retired, we'd have it. And that hasn't been followed at all. I mean, it's a list of stuff of doing inspections and everything. And I'm not even sure if it's on file in here somewhere or not, but, and I'm not sure, Jeff. Like, if you're even on the board yet, we did that.
But is anybody interested?
Well, I would just make one of the chiefs, I'd just pick one of the chiefs and call it a day for the rest of the year. It's not that word. I mean, I don't know, I don't know anything about fire, so.
It's hot.
Hot.
It's hot.
Yeah, it's hot. We have to, or get this hot food. And I know you'll get burned. Don't go in with just a pair of shorts. I should say I'm not trained, sorry.
So, Donnie, I'll go back to you then. Is there a specific amount of training that needs to go along with that? Do we have anybody that has the credentials to be able to do that in our department other than just chief? Just saying chiefs?
I mean, there'd be others possibly that might be interested in it, but I can't sit here and tell you who this. You know, there are other people who have it, but I think it's just for years because Harvey's been the fire marshal for the last forty years or whatever it's been. That's just the way it was. I mean, maybe just, just my opinion, the way it is, you just, for now, till you have something in place, just say the three fire chiefs for now and then come up with a plan to actually what you want to see moving forward. Something like that, you know?
Rather than just one chief, you're saying?
Well, you can do one chief if you want.
That's his opinion.
Yeah, that's just my opinion.
I don't want to, aside, I don't want to say Don Miller's going to be able to do a fire marshal and he doesn't have the credentials that requires, that's required at that position. Does that make sense? So.
It's short and sweet.
Go ahead.
It's nothing political. The guy's more than qualified, he's been around for the longest time. I'll just make a motion to appoint Scott Aki as East Cook County Township Fire Marshal effective April third, twenty twenty five to the end of the year.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And, uh.
So Scott, I'll follow you up.
We will. We will.
I hear a third aye.
Rich, he said it very nicely.
Rich, we will inform him of this. Moving forward, I would love to see that list that you're talking about.
We handed out it means, well, me and Scott, we're the only two left that, of the three must approve that.
So. I know I always heard from Harvey, uh, he wished he was, uh, he would get more input from past staff when buildings were coming in. He, he was kept in the dark of everything.
Yeah.
We are viring for the zoning position, right? I really think it's very important for our fire department, wherever the fire marshal may be moving forward, is in a couple of those meetings as well to be informed of what's going on. They know what, looking at a site, kind of what needs to happen for an apparatus to, 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 to be good in that, in the development or whatnot. So I, I feel like there can't be a disconnect. So we have to, we have to be better about.
And one of the things we had in that list, I know for sure, was inspections. Because a business can build their building, go and they dock it, you know, the way it is day one. Four years down the road, Dave redo the inside of it, we have no clue. And all of a sudden now there's something goes on in that business and that we're like, well, this ain't the what our plans stated.
Because you guys had the plans for one thing and then you guys walk in and it's something different. Not only pure cycle, they've waited all the fire departments, it's wide open. And if God forbid something were to happen, there's a whole bunch of rooms there and you guys don't know what's going on.
Yeah, and you know, they put some more machinery in or change the inside of the building. Because, you know, that's why we thought about at least all the businesses, once every two years, that fire marshal goes in and does inspection and also make sure they're up to code with everything.
Understood. Rich, you'll make sure to get that to him and maybe touch base to see if you can put a list together so that way we can figure out what we're going to be moving forward.
List of?
Of duties of the fire marshal, okay? Uh, the impound lot gate project. We have, uh, Rich, you want to talk on that or?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm, I'm wondering why you're doing notes.
Yeah, so, um, right now we have an issue with the impound lot in that the gate is not big enough to allow straight in parking of raw lots to stack vehicles in our impound lot. So the impound lot is enough to hold a set of vehicles, door handle to door handle. So we can only get two in, I think you're trying to understand correctly, because of the gate. So that they only can come in from two handles. So we have a quote. The, the cure is to, um, add an extension to the existing cantilever gate. So the opening will be twenty foot wide now and they could stack all, hardly be a full utilization of the impound lot. The quote we have is four thousand four hundred and sixty five dollars. It's low enough that we don't have any other gate requirements. So it's a local company, Defense LLC, that does this type of work in the township.
This has been one of the things that Chief Savage was told me since he took over. And most recently with when we did have two vehicles in there, we were scratching our head how we were going to get the third one in there. And I recall the tow truck driver was here and he was, he was saying not so nice things. Because one of the vehicles was not really damaged and they had to get it in there. And then there was two smashed vehicles in there, so it was very tricky on, they couldn't do it. And if you guys do recall, um, that fatal accident we had on two twenty two a couple of years ago, we had that box truck here and it sat outside of our, uh, impound lot because there was no way of them getting it in there with an E four D. And that's that year where they were.
Central parking lot.
Yeah. At the time of the fall, so you never know. We should be able to drive it. If you're driving, probably not, them probably.
Should be able to get more there, you gotta run the bikes, right?
Yeah.
So. So, so chief, is there a spot in your budget where that money is?
We were gonna.
Uh, not this year.
We.
Capital expenditure.
We do have either, a, a view choice, either that or we do have some room in building improvements that we could fund it out of that.
I talked to Rich about that part coming to the meeting because I knew you were going to ask. I could have won the lot and I knew you were going to ask.
Great question, Jeff.
It's coming out of your bank account. Says you were going to pay for it.
You do not have access.
All right, so you got any other questions? It is four thousand dollars.
Yeah, it is.
I'll make a motion to accept a proposal from Defense LLC Akron, PA for the modification of the impound yard gate in the amount of four thousand four hundred and sixty five dollars.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, next up, we got the wastewater ordinance discussion authorization for advertisement. Is that you, Matt, or?
Well. As the board knows, the sewage generated by the township flows to the Ephraida plant for treatment. That plant has regulatory limits on certain inflow characteristics of the inflow. So this ordinance creates those obligations on the character of the sewage flowing in so that as Ephraida does their mandatory testing for D E P, if, um, they discover inflow has heightened amounts of, say arsenic, which is at the top of the list, they can then respond and enforce as necessary tracing that back to the discharge.
And it only applies to industrial and commercial users. And it replaces a prior. This is a routine update based on the way the scrap of permitting that Ephraida.
So is this more stringent than what we had? So we already had this now.
Yeah, it's pretty stringent, a little, not wildly different.
Rich, you're not familiar with it. Okay. Okay.
Good?
This is just a topic.
Yep. I'll make a motion to consider an advertise ordinance 2025-03 to amend the code of the township of East Calico to revise the maximum allowable concentration limits of certain special pollutants and commercial and industrial discharges to the township sewage collection system.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we got the Valori LLC and T-Mobile, the zoning hearing board application 24-783, the settlement agreement revision.
Yes, moving forward, you'll recall that back in December, a settlement was reached based on revised plan for the location of this T-Mobile settlement town. This revision is completely limited to properly designating the T-Mobile single purpose entity that will be holding a license on that site, so we updated the T-Mobile name, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, doing business as T-Mobile. Valori is the developer that will be building the site for T-Mobile. This just happened to come in, and I thought it was good practice that we bring it before you to let you know that the agreement that was signed, you need to have the revised agreement signed and why. This will also go to the zoning hearing board at their meeting, which I think is April 9th, and that will allow us to kindly close the door on all of this and have Valori submit their construction plans, development. So it's just a revision and proper name designation. And we'd be looking to authorize Lorenzo and the secretary to execute on behalf of the
I made a motion to approve a revised settlement agreement in the matter of T-Mobile and Valori LLC versus zoning hearing board, the township of East Calico and East Calico Township, Lexington County Court, please, document number CI2403944. I'll second that.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Interfund transfer bill list and payroll, Jeff?
My turn?
Yeah.
No, no, all right. Okay, general fund back to count list of bills. In the amount of $118,246.32 for the week of March 21st, and $9,196.85 for the week of March 28th. Any question on any of those bills? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a developers fund listed bills in the amount of $24,190.50 for the week of March 21st, and $1,833.18 for the week of March 28th. Any question on that? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have a capital reserve fund listed bills in the amount of $2,720.68 for the week of March 21, and $237,800 for the week of March 28. And that figure is for the new loader that was purchased, and we will be receiving a grant fund for $200,000 of that in kind of weeks. So is there any further questions on that list? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have an electronic payment list of bills for payroll for the paid period of March 9th to March 22nd of 2025, in the amount of $107,414.46. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Treasures reported, done for.
Thank you. New business, are we gonna table the subdivision, or are you here to talk about that, or?
I can talk about it in general, if you'd like. Yeah, this was a project, or one of the items that I talked to Tommy at the end of last year. Basically, it encompasses general usage of the SALDO and the zoning ordinance, trying to identify areas that might be in need of some upgrades. As you can kind of see, a lot of the land developments you see coming before you, there's a lot of the same modification and waiver requests and deferrals being requested. So what we tried to do is look at those a little closely and see if actually, is it something that's related that needs a waiver each time versus should an amendment be considered, because it's either inconsistent with current standards, or if it's in conflict with current regulations that might be out there. So what I did was provide the township with a listing of those, just a bullet listing of those areas of the SALDO and zoning, that we may want to consider for amendment in lieu of granting all of the same waivers that you see for every project moving forward. I know there's a couple out there that we may have had discussions about recently pertaining to some building height information, or maybe some parking issues, parking numbers, that we could also include in that, but the next step would be, if you were willing to move forward with it, would be preparation of a draft amendment to those ordinances for discussion with the board and also the planning commission. Ultimately, it has to go through a formal process of review with the county planning commission, and ultimately, back here for another hearing before they were formally adopted. But the list that I provided essentially just identifies some of those critical areas that we may want to look at further, and again, that's hoping it can be a working document moving forward. But I just figured I would share that with you at some point, so we can get that conversation rolling, if you were interested in looking at that amendment potentially.
I guess for your guys, for your knowledge there, I had spoke to Mike about the development coming in front of us, that the three-story apartment that has, you know, an exception from us in it, that about height. Our ordinance says three-story apartments or forty-foot max, and I guess it was Mike's comment to me that, you know, you can't get a three-story apartment building, maybe unless you have a flat roof or a very low pitch, that would fit into that forty-foot ordinance. And, you know, I guess our conversation went to the idea that you need something forty-four to forty-five foot for, for guaranteeing, even, and I don't know if you want to expand on that just a little bit further, or?
No, that was, that was basically it. I mean, that particular requirement, they needed relief from the zoning ordinance for the building height, but not from the number of stories that were permitted in that particular zone. So the question then becomes, there's no additional units being proposed, it's not a function of their obtaining additional unit yield for number of building units that can be done on the property, it's literally just because of the definition of building height that they would need that relief requirement. So it begs the question, should the height be included in that requirement, or just the limitation of the story height, which is usually what is found in most ordinances?
Without building dictate.
It's building dictate, right.
Ultimately.
Correct. So those are some inconsistencies that, again, they're not necessarily issues where you're allowing more units to go in, versus just providing clarity and not requiring an extra level of relief in front of your zoning hearing board or something of that nature. You already have protections in place to limit the number of units already, it's just a function of the building height definition and being that, that requirement.
And this Mike commented, if you have the experience of a half a dozen applications to the zoning hearing board for the same variance, and all of them are granted, and they're always granted, why is the-
Right.
Why is the requirement set at the requirement?
So all the, say, Utah, Utah-
And the residence-
Resident time, to builder time.
Yeah.
And those are all old, uh, ordinances.
And we encounter those where, you know, mobile homes, you can't buy the mobile home of the same size to replace a mobile home, or that has been destroyed by fire. So then those folks have to bear the additional burden of going to a zoning hearing to replace something that was lost in the fire.
And we're sure, in going through a lot of years of these land development plans, just like you said, repetitive, keep coming up time and time again, I think it's a new brand, it just gets looked at, and the discussion is had. About how it sounds?
So I guess you had to keep pushing forward with that.
Okay.
You keep moving. I guess you were looking for authority to move forward on some-
I think that's the direction that we were looking for, direction from the board to proceed with a draft, and then to review with the committees that I had just mentioned.
It was a long list of things you-
It was, yeah, yeah.
I saw Bernie did signal about that today too, I think, so. We'll follow-
That usually is-
On light and the, and the conversation with planning commission.
And you'll come back to us, is there a discussion items in that list for the board, you know, prior to any formulation?
I'll look at that, I don't know if there, I think there might have been a couple points where I may need some feedback, so I might get with Rich and maybe have him discuss that with you, and we can proceed from there.
Or the planning-
The planning commission.
And first, and then-
Play hard, play hard, you would-
Yeah, let me think about that a little bit, but usually it's team effort between the staff, planning commission, and then-
Right, the management services.
Right.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Right to know law ordinance update?
The big change done at the state level in the right to know law is you don't have to respond to anonymous complaints, and they have suggested that we update our ordinances to match the state regulation. I don't know if that's something you're planning to-
So the style, the recent rulings by the Office of Open Records flows from the requirement in the act currently, that a request may be made by any lawful resident of the United States. So there needs to be in the submission enough information to determine that it is in fact a real person lawfully residing in the United States. So, for example, we recently denied a request because there was a name, there was no phone number, there was no address, there was an email address. Well, you know, that, there was a Gmail address that could go anywhere in the world. This ruling came out of a school district that was getting repeated requests from someone that was unclear why he or she was doing it, but even there was, even the name was fictitious. So that's the ruling, we can rely on the ruling, but the Office of Open Records is asking us to take the next step and incorporate that ruling explicitly in our, our ordinances.
So I guess I'll add that to the next agenda?
Well, yeah.
Do we have to advertise for that, vote on it?
Yeah, it would be, it would be an ordinance adoption, like in, if we have any, well, we have the-
Any motion to advertise it?
Well, we have the sewage ordinance coming up, we could pair them together. Yeah, so we would be looking for direction to prepare it. It's a, it's a simple thing, I don't think, you need to review it before you authorize us to advertise it, so.
Will we make a motion to that tonight, or?
Just authorize us to do it and advertise it together with the sewage ordinance ordinance.
All right, what do we make?
Uh, make a motion to consider and advertise an ordinance revision to the right to know law ordinance and update as discussed this evening.
I don't know, that sound good?
Advertise with the sewer, with the sewer. I'll second that, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, public comment, a five-minute per person limit for comment on non-agenda items, please come forward, state your name for the meeting minutes.
Evening, evening, Johnny, so over. Just more public announcements, this Saturday, the local fire departments are going down to Chester to do a live burn training, so if you live in the area in Five Pointville, a fire company shows up, it's because they're standing by for us, so don't get picked, like, so we're gonna be down there this weekend. Next Saturday is the craft show at Ringstown Fire Station, gonna be Smokes Town, Ringstown together, all the vendors or sponsors sold out, we'll have food there, and there's beef vegetable soup and barbecue that you can buy, cork containers, but that you should preorder, I believe, on my Saturday, so for more information on that, see one of the Facebook pages of the fire companies. Also, right now, on my raffle, we're doing a $300 gift card to Wayne Touch and Nursery, purchase, try to purchase a chance for that, go to Ringstown's website or their Facebook page, they have all the information for that. And also, as well, is first responder today on a weaver, so if you wanna ride a fire truck or whatever, from ten to one, we'll be out there. And Saturday, May 3rd, is the chicken barbecue, which you pick up at Smokes Town and Ringstown Fire Stations.
You have that all of this, so you can put it on our website?
Yeah, we can get you that.
Get it to Rich. And where are we at with the orphan store? Any word on that?
I haven't, there's- After the last meeting, I checked in with the court's clerk, the judge is, according to handle it administratively, it doesn't require a hearing, but he was requesting a couple more items of information, that was two weeks ago, and expect that the response has been made.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, our next meeting will be Thursday, April 17th, at 7:00 PM, here at the township building. I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That will leave me, thank you.